Hello, I'm Bob Rucker, the Director of the School of Journalism and Mass Communications, and we thank you for checking out our video because we want you to know more about the requirement for international learning here in the School of Journalism and Mass Communications. Now, the person in charge of that who will be able to walk us through this process with many of our guests today is the Coordinator of our program, Dr. Matt Cabot. Matt?
Thanks, Bob. Thank you very much, and thanks to you all for coming. We're really excited about doing this panel today. We know a lot of you have had questions about the new international requirement, and what we decided to do is assemble a panel of experts, and if these guys don't know the answers to your question, no one does. So, we're really excited about that. Today, the main purpose is to talk about the why and the how, okay? So with that, let me introduce our panel, and then we'll go just down the line. So, next to me right here, this is Pam Richardson, CASA Associate Dean, and next to Pam is Alaric Trousdale, who's the Education Abroad Coordinator. Then we have Amy Shipman, the Study Abroad Coordinator, Susie Morris, Director of Global Education and Initiatives, and Claire Sai, CASA International Studies Intern. So, I thought what we would do is give each one of the panelists here a chance to talk about the international experience, what they know about study abroad, and we want to make sure at the end that all of you have a chance to ask questions. Does that sound good? All right, so let's go with Dean Richardson first.
Welcome. Thanks for having me here. I want to talk a little bit about why we initiated the international experience and kind of what the requirements are, and I think we're going to pull up the website to do that. The international experience requirement was something we talked about for a long time. We formed a committee, discussed it with faculty, we discussed it with students, and basically the reason why we did this was we felt that the world is becoming increasingly globalized, businesses are transnational, people are moving around a lot around the world, and basically the skills that you gain by traveling abroad are really desired by employers. So, the motivation was to help prepare you to work and live in an increasingly globalized world. So, our, we have that as a goal. I was just looking to see if it was up there. So, we kept it really general, and one of the reasons why we did that is because the College of Applied Sciences and Arts is a very diverse college. We have everything from health professions to journalism to hospitality. So, we wanted to make sure that how this sort of played out in each department really met the needs of the students and the faculty in each department. And I am really pleased to say that the faculty in journalism have really been leaders in this area and have really jumped on this and done a lot of really innovative and exciting things. So, we had courses abroad last year, we have more this year. I'm sure you've probably heard a lot about them from Dr. Cabot and from other faculty in the department. But the requirement basically is, kind of has three components. You need to travel abroad, out of the country, for at least nine days. So, the length of the visit is nine days, and you must receive credit for your experience. So, those are really the only requirements of the experience. Beyond that, there's a lot of leeway to determine what you do and how you do it. I'm having a website trouble here. And we have options for students to, I think it's important, we really want all students to do this, but we also recognize that for some students, traveling abroad is not a viable possibility, and there can be many, you know, really legitimate reasons why a student may not be able to go abroad. So, we do have a petition process for students who are not able to go abroad and want to petition for an alternative to the international experience. And if you qualify for that, basically what you would be asked to do is a 20-hour volunteer work locally, working in some sort of community project or agency that serves a group that's, you know, from a different ethnicity background, cultural background from your own. And again, it's to give you, even if you can't go abroad, to give you a cross-cultural experience here in San Jose State. Accompanied with that is a one-unit online seminar course that is a course where you can analyze and reflect your experience and kind of get the academic benefit. So, between doing the 20 hours and taking the one-unit course, you would meet the international experience, okay? So, that's for students who can't go abroad for whatever reason. A second opportunity is for students who have lived abroad, who have substantial experience abroad. Within five years of entering San Jose State University, that could be serving in the military, it could be working, living abroad, whatever it might be. And the students who petition for that are excused from traveling abroad. Again, they just have to register for the one-unit online seminar course, which is the same course that I mentioned earlier. So, those are sort of the two exceptions to the program. I think one of the concerns that a lot of students bring up is financial, and we absolutely understand that finances are a concern for all of the students. We do have scholarships through the Dean's office in the College of Applied Sciences and Arts, and we also have been given recently an anonymous donation that is specifically earmarked for students in the School of Journalism and Mass Communications. So, you guys actually have even more scholarship money allocated to you to support your travel abroad. And I did want to point out the application, if you can go to the, Claire might be able to help you, where the scholarship application, because if you're traveling this summer, the scholarship application is open now until March 1st. So, I just want to make sure you could see where you would access that. Is anybody going on a trip this summer? Nobody? One?
[inaudible]
Okay, okay.
[inaudible]
Okay. If you're going this summer, this is the money, but this would be available every year. So, if your plans are to go next year, this money would be available as well. But I wanted to make sure that you're aware of that because we've been able to give a lot of these scholarships out. The Dean's scholarships are $500, but this other pot of money might allow us to make larger scholarship awards as well.
Good. All right, thanks, Dean Richardson. We're going to be showing you various websites today, too, resources where you can go and find out more information. That's the CASA International site. It's a great site. It has lots of information that is designed in particular for students in CASA. But, study abroad is also, it's a university-wide phenomenon, and we have a number of people here today who are part of the university initiative. The main goal is to let you know that there's many, many different ways to do this, from short one-unit programs to long, one-year-long programs. And one of the people I want to talk about that today is Dr. Alaric Trousdale.
Shall I stand, or shall I just?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, right. First of all, thank you all for coming today, and thank you very much, Pam, for getting us started. So, my name's Alaric, and I'm one of the Study Abroad Coordinators here, and what myself and my colleague Amy Shipman do is look after students and advise them for, if they're going abroad on a semester or an academic year program. So, I've got a long, prepared spiel. I could go on all day about the benefits and the virtues of studying abroad. And if you ask any study abroad professional, anybody in international higher ed, they'll tell you, you will get more out of your experience the longer you go for the semester or the academic year. But we will be the first ones to admit that that can be kind of scary, right? So, we get asked a lot of different questions about the complicated nature of going abroad for such an extended period, and I'd like to dispel some myths straight away. So, we are often asked, "Do I have to speak a foreign language fluently to study abroad?" And the answer is absolutely not. That's because we have a large number of partner universities, programs worldwide, that are in the English-speaking world, right? So, Great Britain, England, Scotland, Wales, Ireland, South Africa, Australia, New Zealand, India, Hong Kong, right? All those countries, you can study abroad for an extended period and be fine because the language of instruction is all English. It's the language of government. It's the language that everybody speaks. But we also have a considerable number of programs at partner universities in countries where the language of government, the language of business isn't English, but where you can actually take classes in English, because some of our partner universities have a small set menu of classes in English. Countries where you can study abroad, take classes in English, where the language spoken isn't English include France, Spain, Germany, Switzerland, Japan, just to name a few, right? So, you absolutely do not have to speak a foreign language in order to study abroad. It helps. It helps a lot, but you don't have to. Next big myth, this is probably one of the ones affecting each and every one of you. I always ask, "Who's here concerned about money?" Yeah, if you don't raise your hand, you're lying. Okay, so I'm not going to lie to you. Studying abroad will cost you money, but it's probably going to cost you a whole lot less than you think, right? So, the vast majority of our semester and academic year programs, 99.9%, the tuition per credit is exactly the tuition that you pay here if you just stayed here, right? Not a penny more. $3,695, I think it is, for 12 credits. So, in terms of tuition, not a penny more. There are a few costs that you can't get out of, right? International airfare, that's going to cost you about a grand, maybe $1,500. Can't get out of that unless you take a slow boat, and we don't recommend that. But the only additional costs for studying abroad are going to be your cost of living, right? So, your rent, your food, incidental travel. And we're in such a unique position here in Silicon Valley. If you haven't noticed it yet, it's really expensive in this town. The rent is just too high. So, that means for the great majority of partner universities' programs in other countries, the cost of living is actually way less than it is here. If you're living at home, not paying any rent, then yeah, you're probably going to see a boost in terms of your costs because you're going to have to be paying rent and student accommodations overseas. But I'm pretty sure, most of you, you would see actually pay, you'd actually be paying less in rent and less in cost of living overseas. There are a few partner universities where the cost of living is absolutely ridiculously low, talking about like under $200 a month for rent, right, in student accommodations. I doubt you're paying, you know, fees that low here. So, in some cases, not all, right, but in some cases, students have actually saved money, right, by studying abroad rather than staying here in very expensive Silicon Valley. Last big myth I'll dispel before handing it over to my colleague Amy is that studying abroad will delay your graduation. Well, I won't lie to you again. It can delay your graduation if you study abroad the very last semester before you graduate. That can cause delays with getting your grades back from overseas institutions. That may very well delay your graduation. Also, if you make unwise choices in terms of the program that you go on or the classes that you take, for example, if you've got, if you're a journalism major and you go and you take all dance classes and don't move your degree forward, yes, that could potentially delay your major, delay your graduation as well. But with advanced planning, making good choices, working with your academic advisors to find the classes that are going to be right for you overseas, there's no reason, absolutely no reason that your graduation should be delayed. So, all of these are great big red myths, but you've got to plan ahead. Right. I'll hand it over to my colleague Amy.
I've got a mic.
Oh, you've got a mic already. Fantastic.
Okay. So, as Alaric said, my name's Amy. I'm the other Study Abroad Coordinator here in the office. And if we could jump to the next slide. Beautiful. So, I'm going to talk about the program types, kind of my favorite part. There's a lot of research that is entailed with studying abroad, and I can't go into all the details right now in a short period of time, but basically we have three major programs. And these three major programs combined, you have the opportunity to choose from 250 universities abroad in over 55 countries, 35 of which you can study in English, as Alaric has mentioned already. So, there's a multitude of options for you. So, first, the first program we offer is our bilateral exchange program, and all of these three programs are exchange programs. So, as Alaric mentioned, you pay the same tuition as you pay here at San Jose. So, the first program, our bilateral program, like I said, this are, these are direct partnerships that we've created with universities abroad, many of which allow you to directly enroll in their university courses. So, that means the entire course catalog is open to you. Lots of options for a diverse amount of courses you can take. CSU, CSUIP, this is offered to all CSU campuses. It's a really, really well-run program, and we highly encourage students who are looking to study abroad for an academic year to look at these programs. They offer kind of similar to our program. They also allow students to directly enroll in the university, so you're open to the entire course catalog. Or they have specific specialized programs. For example, they have a program to Sweden that's specifically for journalism students, for communication studies majors, and for mass media majors. So, that program is specialized for those students. And our third program is our ISAP program. This is actually run by a nonprofit that works with universities throughout the U.S. to create exchange programs for them abroad. This is one of our larger programs. It's actually the largest program. They offer the widest variety of universities you can study, study in, widest variety of courses you can take. And once again, these programs are, you directly enroll, you're open to the entire course catalog. So, this morning I did a kind of a quick search of what could our journalism students take through these programs, and I'll just list off the countries that I found. You can study in Argentina, Australia, Austria, Belgium, Botswana, Bulgaria, Chile, China, Costa Rica, Czech Republic, Fiji, Finland, France, Germany, India, Hong Kong, Israel, Italy, Korea, Mexico, New Zealand, Norway, Portugal, Puerto Rico, Spain, Sweden, Switzerland, United Arab Emirates, and the United Kingdom. These are really academically excellent universities. For example, we allow our students to go to this university called the University of Oslo. It's in Norway. It's rated in the top 100 universities in the world. So, there's just academically regular, I can't say this word, opportunities for our students to study abroad. So, we highly encourage you to come to one of our study abroad information sessions that we offer at least once a week, and we'll go more in-depth into what our students can do abroad.
Great. Thank you so much, Amy. One of the cornerstones of the study abroad program here in San Jose State is faculty-led programs, and we have a number of faculty members, in fact, here today, who have led programs. And I'm very, very glad that we have a new Director of Global Initiatives and Education, Susie Morris, who is an expert in faculty-led programs. And I'm confident that these programs across the campus will get better because you're here. So, let me introduce to you now, Susie Morris.
Can I steal your phone?
Oh, yes, of course.
Well, no pressure with that introduction. Hi, everyone. So, I'm going to talk to you today about faculty-led programs, and I think I should start out by saying that I always did semester and year-long, really year-long. As long as I could be outside of the United States, I was just really happy. I lived abroad for about 12 years, all over the place, and everybody asks me to this day, first of all, they say, "Oh, you're so young," and I say, "Oh, stop it." How did that happen? You know, who were you with? Were you military? Absolutely not. In high school, my dad told me I have no respect for authority, so that wasn't going to pan out for me. And then people ask me, "Oh, Peace Corps," and I came really close to doing Peace Corps in college. I'm a linguist, so I, even though there are English options, I totally encourage all of you to try to pick up a language. And I studied Russian, and so I was doing my Peace Corps application, and literally the night I needed to do my fingerprints, which as a Russian major, I was fairly cynical of the government, my house burnt down. So, I took it as an omen, withdrew from the Peace Corps. Not that it's not a great organization, but again, studied Russian studies for like 10 years, so there was some conspiracy. I was that age. Anyway, so then I just packed my bags and I went abroad and made it work. And really, half the time when I ended up in countries, I quite literally flipped a coin. That's how much thought and intention I put into it. I would be someplace I needed to leave. Two out of three heads, I was going to whatever that was. And it served me really well. Again, I don't encourage most people to do that. I'm kind of a, that's my version of jumping out of an airplane. It's for some people, not for all. So, if you can't do semester or year, right, and if you don't have those methods to get abroad, I rarely find people that don't want to go someplace and see something, right? I see a sweepstakes to go to some tropical location. I'm always trying to win. I never do, right? But I feel like maybe we've done that, right? You want to travel. It's a great thing to travel. It's great to experience new places. I rarely meet people who say, "To hell with that. I don't want to travel. Why would I want to go anywhere else?" Although, I am from Iowa, so maybe a little bit harder to find that person there than California. So, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, this isn't the, something that people don't want to do. It's really all of the obstacles that we put in our way to get it to happen. And life happens, right? Some of us have pets. I've got two cats. They're like my children. I have children. I should have mentioned them first. You know, I've got a spouse. I've got bills to pay. I've got all of these things that I'm responsible for. And so, looking at a semester or a year may not be the most feasible thing for me to do. For some of you that don't have those obligations at this point, or not obligations, gifts, right? So, if you don't have kids, pets, bills, you don't own, have a mortgage to pay, you're not paying on your student loans yet, I really, really would like to encourage you to entertain looking into a semester or year. And Alaric is dead right. The cost of living here, I think when I got the job, I interviewed with Pam, and I said, "I can finally feel comfortable traveling to the U.K. because I'll be able to afford it," right? It's found out here, and that's a really good currency that, it's much better than the dollar sometimes. Anyway, I digress. So, if you don't have those obstacles in front of you, think about this. Talk to your advisor, find a plan, and see how you can make it work. It will literally change your life. You'll be independent, thrown out into a situation, you know, it gives you experiences that you may not get here. Again, you know, I'm from Iowa. I look like an Iowan. We're 98% Caucasian. Not that we're not lovely people. We're very friendly. But saying that, there's something to be said, when I lived in Asia for four years, I don't look Thai. I know you might argue that I do, but I wasn't pulling the wool over anyone's eyes. Even in Russia, the favorite game was, "Where are you from?" Clearly, you're not Russian, right? I'm not six-foot-tall, supermodel-esque with blond hair and fair skin, even though I'd like to report that I am. So, you know, that's one of those things, is having that experience of being a minority for the first time, or being surrounded by a different population and how they react to you, life-altering moment. And frankly, as you go out in the world and get jobs, you're going to end up working with people from all different backgrounds, and this is where these requirements are just really cool because you're getting practice. You're going to do something stupid when you're abroad, guaranteed. You'll say something that's just totally out of line, and the room will go silent, and then you'll try to laugh it off. But that's a learning moment, and then you know when you're working with somebody else, you won't do that again. So, what's the alternative to semester and year, even though, again, that's a great option, is what I do. It's called faculty-led programming. You know, this has a lot of different names. Here at San Jose State, it's called FLP. That's our nice abbreviation for it. And what we do in FLP, these are those shorter moments. So, for those of you that really are dependent on getting that paycheck, and you can't go for a semester or a year, or you gotta, you know, maybe you can take two weeks off if you planned well, and you can get this experience, you can get the credit, this is maybe the program for you, right? So, FLP programs are within our faculty. Matt is one of them, and we just met. That's why he's tooting my horn. I like him a lot. But we have faculty here who, they put together these incredible programs where they're teaching a course that you would take normally here at San Jose State, but they're taking the show on the road. So, you're actually taking that course, but within the context of the location that you're in. So, they really plug in to the local resources, the different cultures, the different aspects that can be related from the course into that community. A really super easy example is anytime you take a history course, I mean, or an art history course, even better. Would you want to sit in a classroom and look at the pages in the books, or maybe a Google walkthrough of the museums? Those are pretty rad. Or would you rather just go to the Uofizy and talk about it? Would you rather have the class where you're sketching on the street of something that you're seeing and then talking about that, and how it's so different from what you know, and how you can incorporate some of the things that you're learning into your life and take that with you moving forward? These are really nicely priced options as well. FLP, because they're shorter, the price point is a little bit lower. They can range in price. You have to look at each one. They usually range depending on how long you're someplace. So, if it's nine days versus 21, that's certainly going to have an impact. Alaric is dead right, though. If you go to some places, like our Vietnam program this semester, the price point is $2,150. They're there for like three weeks, and really, the plane ticket on top of that, and that's the most expensive part, is the plane ticket, right? But for $2,150 bucks, I'm going to tell you, you get all your hotels, most of your meals paid. The meals that aren't paid, you can get for a buck. Best fa of your life, okay? I've been to Vietnam. I want to go. Some tours to some amazing places right now where they're going to a place called Halong Bay, which is like a James Bond movie. Again, been there. Amazing. So, you know, there's lots of options where it's a shorter period of time, the price can be right, and if you do plan, I mean, a lot of this comes down to planning, okay? Because you got to think about it. If you know, like, we're advertising our FLP in fall, so look for it. Look for what's happening and what programs are on offer. Hone in on what is interesting to you. If you know a journalism professor and you want to go with them, go call them up, right? I always tell people, it's kind of competitive. It's kind of like getting a job. You want to make sure they know who you are, because when they see your application, they're going to be like, "Sweet, I want that guy," right? And then you apply for the program, and then we're going to ask you to put down a deposit. That's a good faith measure. That tells me that you are, you're legit. You've thought this through. You're not just saying like, "My boyfriend Bobby signed up for this program, and I want to go because I love him," because then you're going to drop out when you break up three weeks later. So, I want to know that you thought about this, that this is the thing for you, that you think this is going to impact you, you're going to get a takeaway here. We're going to have that good faith deposit, says, "I'm going on this program." And then we're going to give you some time to save the rest of the money. And truthfully, if you started saving some money now, so if you squirreled away 50, 100 bucks each month, which is a little tight, but again, put the beer down. One beer every weekend. There you go, okay? You get that 50 or 100 bucks, get a savings account. I know it's wicked old school, but get one. They're really cool. They're really hard to get the money out of. That's the key to a savings account. And you put that together over the months, and you're going to get there, okay? Beg, borrow, not steal. Crowdfund, fundraise, bake cookies, hit up grandpa, make friends with the aunt. That's a little weird and smells bad, but she has the cash. Do what you need to do to save the money. It's just not that much, and start planning for this, and you can work it right in. The other really cool thing about FLP is you're with your faculty member. How many of you thought about doing grad school or going on to a nice job where you're going to need a letter of reference? Anyone? How well do you think they're going to get to know you when you're traveling with them for two, three weeks? I mean, really. Like, it's almost, it's almost like this is your new buddy, still professor, but somebody that knows you well enough that they won't, you know, get mad when you have like parsley in your teeth. They're just going to be like, "This guy's great. I'm in totally vouch for him." So, this is a networking opportunity for you, not just with your faculty member, but on FLPs, they actually contact their peers in the field, different resources and specialists that are in those places, and you're going to meet people all over the globe. And this is what I found. I've been doing this gig for a long time. Students that go, you just need the taste, right? It's like chocolate. You eat it once, and you kind of like, "Yeah, I'm going to do that a lot more," right? So, with traveling, you kind of get that first taste. You recognize that all of the stuff up here that's saying, "Oh, my God, this is going to be so challenging, and I can't do it," it just disappears. Again, you will do anything to get back overseas. I think about moving abroad 23 out of 24 hours a day. I dream about it. My husband tells me I speak in Russian at night, and he just still tries to record it, and I think he's lying, but it's probably true. I think about this constantly. I've looked into visa plans, how I can migrate, if I'm a skilled worker. I can go through this with you. This is all I think about. I'm fixated. I started when I was 14. I have not stopped. I have no intention of stopping. My next goal, after I long ten here at SJSU, is to then, again, move abroad, because I know that my lifestyle abroad is usually far better than being here. And it's something you don't believe until you experience it. So, I find that when students do FLP and they're brought into this, I mean, it's not like you're flying solo, because that can be pretty scary if you haven't traveled a lot, or maybe if your family's like, "Wait, what are you doing? You know, you don't need to do this." This is a way where you're with somebody that you know. You build relationships with your community of the people who are traveling with you to the point that you will know each other till you die, like it or not, okay? I've led these, my students write me almost daily on Facebook, okay? "You're part of a team. You'll take this with you. You've got a network. You have this great experience." You know, you can put that into your resume. "I acquired cross-cultural communication styles from being abroad and meeting with these people, and I made connections with this community, et cetera, et cetera." I was reading all of the local papers. I know how to, how the differences between journalism in the U.S. and the journalism in this country are, and this really blew my mind. These are great resume builders, better interview options, and a great cover letter, okay? This is what kind of places you there. They want to see that people are open to other people. This is a great opportunity. You're going to meet lots of people. You can take that back. You can keep up with them forever. You know, I came from a school before this that had a requirement to study abroad. Pam is so nice that there's actually alternatives for you. There were no alternatives at the school where I was. And so, that was my day, is telling people, "I'm sorry, you're going someplace," right? And they were in central Pennsylvania. I always wondered, "Why would you want to stay in central Pennsylvania?" I could not figure it out. I couldn't get out of there fast enough, every opportunity. California, I get it. It's nice, right? It's really nice here. I don't ever want to leave either. But this is a great opportunity where you have a security net of people you know to make sure that all of the risks, all of- make sure that all of the risks, all of the obstacles are kind of cleared out of your path, where you can have this really pure experience, where you can get out there, you can try things out in a way that you're not putting yourself out there in danger. Right? And that's why FLP is a really good opportunity for students who maybe haven't traveled that much, or have some limitations at home where you can't leave, maybe you're helping mom and dad, maybe you're paying part of the rent. It's a short period of time. And the best part is, is it's like doing summer school, you get just free credits, really. I mean, you're taking a class, you add it into your mix, you might actually be able to cut down on your time here a little bit. All food for thought, again, I can ramble like a fool for days. This will go on. If you ever want to talk about it, I'm more than happy. But I'm going to pass the torch to our student, who's probably, I hope she backs me up.
Thank you, Susie. I just want to reiterate or talk about my experience too, as a leader of a faculty-led program. There's nothing that I do where I get a bigger ROI, return on investment. You know, when you teach, you hope that you're making some difference, and occasionally you get an email from somebody who's successful and says, thank you so much for teaching me this. Those are few and far between, but when you lead a program like this, and you see the transformation from day one to day 25, it is dramatic. First day you get there, and there's wide-eyed, like, a little bit of a frightened look, what are we doing here? This is, this is kind of crazy, but we're so excited, we're finally here after months of talking about it. To that moment, three weeks later, when now the students are experts in navigating the metro, or talking about where they're going to go next. Susie is absolutely right. Students who do this want to keep on doing it. I do get emails all the time saying, hey, I'm in Africa, I'm over here. Once you do it, you're going to want to keep on doing it. So we really believe this. We're not doing this to be mean to you, but it's because we love you, actually. We want to make sure you have this kind of experience. I like taking art historians with me, because they get this, just this look of awe in their eyes, they're finally at their place. One of those students that went with me two years ago is Claire Sai, and she's now the CASA International intern. And I asked her to come here too, to talk about her experience that she had on her international experience. Claire?
Thank you. Got it?
Yeah. I think I might be needing to borrow a little more space.
Is it okay?
Perfect.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you so much for the introduction, Dr. Cabot. And I might be a little nervous, just because I'm too excited to talk to you, so just bear with me here. I'm set up very well here. All, every, every little piece of information you heard today, I hope I can add to that. And I think between, that we are in an increasingly globalizing world, I need, and I believe you two do, you all, you do as well, globalized education and the experience studying abroad, the experience of living abroad, different new perspectives to gain, and to figuring out how to make it work, learn to take on challenges and adapt. Those are all just, one of the, few of the many, many, many things that you will gain by taking the opportunity to study abroad. I am an art historian. I do have a declared major in PR, so I am in the right family. And yes, when I have gone abroad, and since 2014, last year, I made it work again, I wanted to go, I could, just like Susie said, you bit that chocolate and you said, that's it, I am going to eat that chocolate forever. Because how could you not love seeing the world and travel and see better of yourself too? What is your skillset? What is my skillset? What is your skillset? What do I need to learn still to have the kind of quality of life, the kind of career path that I want? And I cannot afford, and I think I speak for my fellow peers, that we cannot afford to not have that experience. The world is changing so quickly. And there are things that we learn in the classroom, but by going abroad, it's amplified. I remember specifically in 2014, when I went on the program, and by the way, you build friends for life, you will still be in contact with them and they will back you up always. I remember we had several visits to PR agencies that are very prestige, internationally renowned, and they include Havas, Edelman, and MSNL. I can't say the whole thing, Mitch Salvageli, it's quite long. The kind of opportunities to network directly, it's very hard to get that. And we, myself, part of 20 other students, we were given that kind of opportunities. We sat down, we recruiters, we get to learn about what the company is about, what do they do, and their clientele, and their philosophy. And you are invited to network. We sat down with them, where they passed the iPad around and said, login, your LinkedIn. And immediately, you realize that I have to have that ready. So these are just one of the few stories I can go on as well. Because I do love, I do love talking about studying abroad, I think everyone needs it. And, and so, when that iPad was passed around, I realized that we have to have that ready. But what I, what I really wanted to say is, it is a transformative experience, but you have to make it work for yourself. It is a challenge. It's, it's not, it's not easy, but it's so, so worth it. I, I think, again, I might have said this word over and over, but what I appreciate the most is opportunities. There are opportunities here, but the opportunities you gain by having that study abroad experience. And faculty-led program, I can speak so highly of, because that was my introduction to the study abroad life, and, and the international experience life. And to have faculty that back me up, and encourage me, and tell me that it's going to be okay, it takes planning. My very good friend of mine, she, she needed to figure out a way to save fast, so working unfortunately didn't help so much in the, in the speed that she needed. So it's a challenge, and what, what you learn from it is figure out how to tackle that challenge. So she decided, I'm going to bake macaroons. And she saved so much money, and then it actually now gives her the opportunity to have her own business, actually. So, so it just, I know you've already heard so much, but hear from me, that the opportunities you have, whether it's career, or it's life, or it's little skills that you learn about yourself, or very concrete things that will push you forward in the career that you want, gives you something to talk about in interviews. You know, they really, employers want to know that they want to have someone on their team that's willing to take initiative, and take challenges, and be willing to adapt. And that's something I'm very much still learning, but I feel like every step of the way, I'm building those skills. And I, and I have to say, almost everyone I speak of, my peers, friends, Spartans that have graduated from here, perhaps the number one regret is that they didn't go abroad while they're in college. And I don't want that for you. I, I want all of my friends and new friends, I hope, to take that step. And you're in a really good place. JMC is very supportive of the students. I can speak that from my own, my own experience. So I hope that's something for you. Yeah, thanks.
Great. Claire, thank you so much. We did want to give you, students, an opportunity to ask questions too. So if you do have a question, again, these are the people that know the answers. So raise your hand if you have a question, and then we can...
I just wonder, what is the requirement for international students? Because I'm international, so I'm already kind of studying abroad.
For CASA, you, Pam, what is the requirement as an international student? So you would, you would follow the, I'm sorry, you would sort of follow the same category of students who had lived abroad previously, and doing the community, local community service, and the one-unit class online. But we would encourage you to do it abroad.
All right, other, other questions?
So I understand that probably a lot of the different programs offer, or have different like requirements, but for example, for faculty-led program, is it more, more or less like you attend at the university, is it more or less like attending like museums? Like, what exactly are you doing within these like three weeks?
Sure. So I'm an advertising professor here, and took 10 girls to Florence, Italy last summer, and we studied, one of the things I teach is integrated communications. And so we studied in Florence, the fashion houses. We went to the Vespa factory. We sampled a little bit of wine in Tuscany in Florence. But the reality was, I think what's important is the, is the practicality of what a program, a faculty-led program that I can speak to is about. Every morning, we would go to a classroom, very similar to this, and we would study for a couple of hours, we would talk for a couple of hours, I would talk about different subject matters in regards to integrated communications. The afternoons were spent, set up for us, either to go to the factories, to go to the fashion houses, to go to different places within Florence, Italy itself. We would come back the next day, discuss those again. And so that kind of went on every day of the week. We went to many of the museums, Ufusi, the Academia, all the variety of different places that Florence is famous for, we did those kinds of things. I think it's important to say, the 10 girls that I took are the best of friends. They did not know each other when they went. They are the best of friends today. They're all in different sororities and what have you here on campus, and yet, they are the best of friends, and all they can talk about is going again and doing this kind of a thing again. The weekends are free. The weekends, you'd be surprised, in Europe, an hour train ride, you're in another country. And you get to see those places on your own. And a couple of you get together, and you're going here, and a couple of others are going there, and you're back Monday morning, back in the class again, in the facility. But you get to do all those other kinds of things also, at your own speed. The food, of course, you get to try all the different foods and so on, in a, in a foreign country. And by the way, if we do a faculty-led program, I'm going to do Florence again, but I'd also do Costa Rica and Fiji. So keep me in mind for those two, okay? I'm, I'm a total Intotropic, so, yeah. And, and frankly, I came out of the business world, and I've traveled all over the world. And I've never had, and as Matt said, the return on investment for us was incredible, because I saw what the students got out of it. And I know John can probably talk, he was in Madrid last summer, it's the same thing. It's just one of those incredible experiences that you do and get to be a part of, and you will never forget it, absolutely never forget it.
Thank you, Tim Hedrick, Professor of Advertising in our department. Yes, and Susie?
I just want to say that every FLP looks different, right? So that's a great example, and I think that that's definitely the model, and many look like this. There's other FLP programs where, you know, you're with the group and you do excursions together through the weekend that are kind of dialing back towards that, that class experience. Some are simply just for fun, right? So, you know, all of these setups are a little bit different from one to the next, and really, that's why it's important to work with the faculty to understand what's going to happen, because they're all just a little bit different. The class component is always there, and then all of the other pieces that are built into it. Maybe it's business visits, which makes sense for some programs, or those site visits that kind of come back again to the classroom experience. But it could also be, you know, spending a day in a park, discussing the experience and what you've learned from just talking with people. I've seen a lot of value of doing cultural scavenger hunts, right? So, for example, asking students, giving them a list of, here's 10 things that I want you to do when you have downtime, see how many you can do. More of a challenge to you, right? Winner who gets all of them done gets some kind of a prize. But that could be something like talking to somebody who's a senior, who maybe lived through World War II. I can tell you, one of the most impactful experiences I had was living in Russia, listening to, you know, a former KGB agent and, and a former Communist Party leader talk about how Reagan did not end the Cold War. So I still argue that point with people, because they made a really good point. I mean, it's, we look at things from our side of the ocean, it's kind of interesting to see how people look at it from theirs. So each of these programs really can vary, depending on who is running the program, what they've built into it. Lots of activities usually are part of it, sometimes some group meals. Sometimes they're a bit more autonomous, where you're eating meals on your own, and you're, you're kind of getting a group of, a cohort of friends, where you can go out and try new restaurants and things like this. And then there's also programs where you enroll into an institution there. So it's very similar to the semester-long model. It's this indirect enrollment piece where you actually, for our, we have a program in Finland, for example, and one in Slovenia, where students will actually take classes alongside Slovenian students and Finnish students that are offered by that university. So there's a lot of options for courses that you can take. And then you'll work with our faculty to do some excursions, and then they'll be there to support you throughout. You know, they'll show you around, they'll give you the ropes, the orientation. So you can have a bit more autonomy with that. And the nice thing about those programs is that you're with a small cohort of people, right? So you still have the group of people that you've traveled with, you kind of have a built-in crew. So every FLP is a little bit different. I really encourage you to explore the FLP website, look at the different programs and see what they say, because they do a really nice job of outlining them. And then if you have further questions about that, if you want more of an autonomous trip, and you think that it sounds like it's a little bit more of a group thing where you're together more often than you'd like, then ask the faculty member, or vice versa, right? Maybe you want more of that group thing and less of the autonomy. Talk to them, reach out and ask them, you know, how much free time do we have? What does this look like? Are we doing some scheduled excursions, or is that really on our own? They know every detail. Sadly, far better than I do, but granted, I've been here for like eight weeks, so bear with me. But the thing is, is there's lots of different ways that FLP can look. And you can find the one that fits you.
Pam Richardson, you want to come in?
Yeah, I just wanted to point you that with the CASA requirement, one of the things that we're focusing on is making sure that the courses that students are taking as FLPs are progressing them towards their degree. So our faculty members have been amazing at taking courses that exist on campus, converting them to an FLP course. And so you're getting credit for that, that course that you need to take anyhow for your, for your major, but you're doing it in an international context. And, and one of the things that we do emphasize, and Tim gave a great example of that, is, yeah, you spend a little bit of time in class, but that's not how most of your time is spent. You know, you're doing site visits to businesses or clinics. I took a group of nursing and occupational therapy students to Grenada the year before last, and we did a lot of clinic visits, a lot of community health kinds of projects. And when we had our debrief every day, we had it in the Caribbean, so we were all swimming in the water, talking about what we did that day. So it's just, you know, it, it, it is a very relaxed and a different sort of environment, but at the same time, we're really focusing on making sure that you guys are making progress to your degree in these programs.
Great, thank you so much. Yes, John Dela Cruz, Professor of Advertising in our department.
Thanks, Matt. I just want to add, just very quickly, because I know it's like, you know, other people will have questions as well, but a lot of the learning does actually happen, yeah, I mean, we're doing the classroom things like Pam and Tim were saying, but most of it's happening outside of the classroom in ways in which you wouldn't expect. So when I was in Madrid, for example, ancients were living in, in shared apartments, in areas that weren't tourist areas. So they were neighborhoods. And so they were having to go and get their own food from the corner store, they were having to, you know, they were there, like amongst people from Madrid. And so what they learn culturally, you couldn't learn in a classroom, because they were immersed in the, in the experience of the place as well. So there was learning happening in the formal sense, but there was a lot more learning actually happening in the informal sense. And the fact that we had a bunch of students who, again, you know, we're not making it up, they did become friends beyond that, and they're already planning reunions. Some of, I think about 50% of them started to investigate ways in which they could either go and intern, or work, or continue to study in Madrid. And they were really taken with it. And not all of them could speak Spanish. In fact, I think that 70% of them couldn't speak Spanish. It was just amazing how they were transformed in that way. They also became real experts at traveling and at finding their ways around. In fact, I was relying on them to get to places sometimes, you know? Yeah, they're, they're really bonded, but like I said, the learning happened in more ways than just simply in the formal sense.
Great, thank you, Professor Dela Cruz. Another question from the audience here?
Hi, so I'll be going to Canada for spring break. I wanted to know if there were any requirements as a JMC student that I needed to do, because I will be going with business majors, or if there was any like paperwork I needed to do, saying that I fulfilled this requirement.
Very short time. So I'm looking at the greatest staff member I've ever had in my entire life, Ms. Tao Fan. And she knows a lot of the details in terms of the paperwork that we require. And she knows a lot of the details in terms of the paperwork that we require. And forgive me, I've been meeting everyone, so I'm still navigating that. So maybe we can talk about that. There is paperwork that's required for us, for FLP, right? Okay, good. So, so traditionally, and, and I guess with this, there should be a small caveat that I'm getting ready to make some pretty big changes with her FLP program, so this paperwork will evolve. So I don't want to get into too many details, especially on camera, because it's going to change, okay? Not dramatically, it's just going to be a bit different in how this looks in this upcoming year. Hopefully, the season will be drawn out a little bit longer, so we'll have more time to get our things done. But for questions about our paperwork right now, maybe after, it would be better to speak with Tao and I, so we can make sure that we've covered all of our bases. Now, in regards to the requirement, I feel that that's a secondary person I'm going to touch on.
Yeah, I mean, traveling to Canada with the business course, you would meet the international experience requirement for JMC. So just having done that would meet the requirement. Whether the course gives you credit towards degree, you have to work with your advisor on that, since it's out of the department. But it, it, it might, it might work out. But, you know, that's up to the department to decide. But you will meet the international experience requirement.
Thank you. Yes, Andrew, who's behind the camera, do you want to step in front of the camera?
So I was just wondering, because I know that there are advertising things that go to Florence and Madrid, but I was just wondering if people who want to go to Florence or Madrid that aren't in advertising major, they can just go?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because I really want to go to Florence.
Yeah, my, my program originally was international public relations. There's still a focus on that for corporate visits. But again, I, I get business majors, I have international studies majors, I have comm majors, I have kinesiology, political science. So yeah, so these programs are not, are not closed to people who are not part of your department, okay?
I think that students typically, there's like two factors that play a role. One is people who want to get their major, the box clicked for that, that's a big thing. And, and that's, that's one student, and they'll definitely gravitate to programs, be it semester year or FLP, that focuses on the major. And that's totally fine. I mean, that's one kind of student. There's another kind of student, though, that's like, I want to go to X location, right? You know, this is, this dates me like so bad, but when people are like, oh, I saw Notting Hill, I want to go to London. I mean, we've heard this, right? Like 100, like, there was like a whole decade of that, I want to say. And then there was, you know, the hobbit, I'm going to Australia. I would like to advise you, don't go someplace based on a movie film, but if that's your moment, do it. I mean, if you need to scratch that itch. But, you know, location can really draw to you. Maybe it's a heritage thing, right? Maybe your family's Spanish, and you want to go experience Spain because you even had that. Italian, I already, hey, you didn't have to tell me. Again, I've been here for a while, like, I can tell. But you know what I mean? So like, there's people who definitely gravitate to things because there's some kind of family background. And, and the nice thing about FLP is that absolutely some of these can play directly into your major, but there's also a lot of FLP out there that are general education requirements. So that, you know, you can fulfill their requirement. And if you aren't really that concerned about, you know, getting off track, so like, let's say you've done some summer school, or you're just really on your game, which would be great, and you want to knock out an elective, a GE, something like this, yeah, you can go on any of them. And I think that actually, and, and I'll reach out to the faculty, because I've led these programs about 100 times, and I get students from all different majors. And truthfully, I feel like there's such a value in having a variety of students that are involved, because the perspective going into it is totally different, right? The conversations that come from that are pretty amazing. And to speak to the requirement, one thing that everybody really enjoyed in my, in my past life, right, where this was required, is that when they got into the, be a senior year, most people had finished their requirement, and they would go to classes. And like, let's say you're taking, you know, a journalism class, and you'd have somebody in the classroom who said, oh, yeah, well, I studied in Ghana for a semester, and I watched the daily news, and I looked and compared it to, you know, what was being piped in from abroad, and these are the differences that I felt. And then somebody else would say, well, I was in Macau. And in Macau, this was a real limitation, because we had the Chinese government, but it was separate, but it's not really, but is it? And so then you have this really diverse conversations that happen, because so many people have different experiences from which to draw. And it really takes the class to the next level, especially as you get further along in your college career. Because when you have a requirement, this is one of those side benefits that I don't think people really notice until it happens, is that all of a sudden you have this really cool breadth of experience and swath of information that everybody brings a little different, and then you're like, oh, no way. I wouldn't have expected that. That's so cool. And then you can kind of share it, and it takes the, the class to the next level. So, so even if it's outside of your major, if it is a heritage trip, right on, get to it. Italy, you've got a participant already. So, you know, I think that this is something you can look around to see what's out there. And again, I, I can't encourage you enough, reach out to the faculty. This is obviously a labor of love for all of us involved, and we have a great deal of passion about where we're going, so they really can tell you all the highs and lows, right?
Good, okay, we're almost out of time, but I want to make sure you see our website. Although, you got one quick question here? Okay?
Well, this question doesn't really apply to me, but towards like classmates who wants to switch their majors into like PR and journalism, even though they're a third year, would they still be required to do an international experience?
If they're, if they're changing into their majors this, this year, students who have been at San Jose State prior to changing into the major are not required to do it, okay? So it, it took effect last semester. So the students that are held to the requirement are students who entered as journalism, mass comm majors, as a freshman, or as a transfer student, new to San Jose State, fall 15 or after. So the students who were here previously and then changed to their major are not held to that. But we would encourage it, for all students.
Great, thank you.
Does that also apply for like, if you were undeclared?
Yes.
Okay, so wait, you do have, it is required?
If you are undeclared at San Jose State and you then declared journalism, mass comm, you're not required to do that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if you were here on campus prior to fall 15, it doesn't, it does, you're not required. But again, we would really encourage it.
Great, all right. Any last question? Yes?
You mentioned that there's a weekly meeting that informs us more of this. When and where is that?
Yeah, so at least once a week, and sometimes twice a week, we run general information sessions. They run about an hour long, with an additional half hour if you're interested in specifically in the various scholarships that are available, only to students who study abroad. A list of those can be found on the main Study Abroad website, sjsu.edu/studiedbroad.
Good, all right, so let's, oh, yes, Claire?
Since we're, since we're talking about information, I know you already got your passport of opportunities, but I do wanted to bring, show you here. So we have several business cards over there on the table with lots of goodies, sunglasses, tote bags. Thank you. luggage, luggage identifier, so pick one up on your way back to class. But I do wanted to mention this one more time, I mean, again, so speaking about scholarships, so if you are going on an FLP this summer, just remember, the scholarship deadline is March 1st, and there's still time to apply, so I hope you take that opportunity.
Thank you, Claire. All right, so lastly then, and we'll let you go, on our website, the main JMC website, we do have the International Experience tab. If you click on that tab, you will see, first of all, our motto, which is "Travel, Learn, Come Back Changed." The goal of international education, international experiences, is transformation, right? You come, you're one person when you, when you leave, you're another person when you come back, and we think that's super valuable. On the right side here, we've got a number of links, quick links for you, the CASA International Experience, SJSU Study Abroad, JMC requirement details. So if you want details of what it looks like, that's where you should, we should go. Photo gallery, testimonials, and then some of the waivers that we have, the International Experience Modification, if you've had some experience before and you want to petition for a modification, or if, if you're looking for an alternative to that experience. And then a bunch of other study abroad resources here. Let's scroll down, I want to show you the last part. I feel like John King from CNN with the little, if Trump wins in this corner. No, okay. Keep on going up. That's, yeah, farther. All right, so we, we tried to break this down into three easy steps. Select, check, and go. The select part is, we really want to make it clear to you guys that there's lots of different ways to do this. We're repeating this from the CASA International website, again, the SJSU Study Abroad website. There's lots of ways to do that. So you, you select the one you want to go on. And then the second step, if you can scroll up a little bit, check. Check to make sure that, you know, it's travel outside of the United States, that it's the minimum of nine days, you're receiving academic credit. Talk with us, and then we will say, yes, it's good, approved, go for it. By the way, any FLP by default is approved, and any, basically any study abroad program that we have on our website is going to be approved, okay? And then finally, go. We want to have you guys go on your experience and then come back and tell us all about it. Okay, any last minute comments? All right, will you, will you join me in thanking the panelists today? And our team that put this together, thank you, our videographers, and Amy Deanna that helped to do this. And thank you all for coming. We're very excited about this, and we wish you bon voyage.